Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Like work meeting, first one in July, moved to Thursday night because Tuesday was July 4th. First order of business is collect the leagins, whatever we're gonna join in.
All right, leagins to comply on United States of America and this republic for which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Uh, agenda review. Uh, you didn't put on a update on that possible grant, I'm sure. Where were you gonna bring that up?
Uh, probably under other business, because I just had that conversation yesterday.
Yeah, that's fine. Does anybody else have anything to add? Alright.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple of things.
Forward.
Okay, there's two things. Or three things for executive session. And Kathy's got.
I have a resolution to be signed.
Resolution for the bank.
The rec department, so we need some accounts, and it just need to have a resolution signed, but.
So that would be new talent business.
That would be under new talent business. Okay.
I think that's.
Do I need to abstain from signing that? No.
That's it?
I believe so.
Okay, we can move on to the minutes of the June 20th regular meeting. Somebody have any add?
Second.
Alright, motion been made in second, is there any more discussion? If not, a motion in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Now, public comment for anything that is not on the agenda. So we'll move on to law enforcement. And Keith is here, love his report.
We don't want any trips, yeah.
Alright, so this summary for June, there were 53 incidents, officers responded to them. Out of those 53 incidents, there were four traffic stops, zero ticket issued, four warnings issued, there were three arrest charges total that encompassed two arrestee's tolls and one arrestee was charged for two different crimes. You see, directed patrol, there were 12 incidents, eight agency assists for suspicious people, four traffic stops, these are the top 10 incident types. Three citizen assists, three more vehicle complaints, two crashes with injuries, two alarm responses, two crash, and I believe one community housing, which is what that looks like. And that is the summary for the month, you'll see on the ticket report, it is still, and I'm a little confused by the fact that you'll see there's 12 directed patrol cards total, but four of the directed patrol cards were pulled by the system in researching it, I'm not sure why it's not pulling all of them. It's only pulling four, it seems that those fields are automatically getting populated as far as our particular warning field, and that's why it's pulling that data out. But, I was quite frankly expecting a little more as far as traffic stops go this past month. I know there was more in the Villas, I looked at the Villas toll, I had a conversation with one of the sergeants, because I wasn't aware of this until looking at this today, this data set today. So, we're gonna have a concerted effort to do more traffic in the town. I know there's gonna be some leverage of resources also coming up here shortly with Governor's Highway Safety Detail, where hopefully we can have officers from all around the state, different agencies coming up to engage in traffic enforcement in the town, one of five corners specifically.
They've been out on 78 as well, DMU was out there this weekend.
I did notice that in the last couple of days, there's been a significant increase in presence on the Route 7 portion of this Swanton town. Which is really awesome to see. Yeah, we're hopefully gonna leverage more resources in our neighborhood also, but we should be doing more traffic stops than what this indicates here.
Is there anything else, impression?
No, I mean the officers are actually executing a search warrant on a vehicle right now as we speak. So the drug enforcement is continuing, and we are continuing to work with federal partners to address some of the issues in the town related to drugs. So we'll see how that goes, it's a little different method of operation when you involve federal agencies, they tend to operate a little slower for a longer case versus what we're used to as far as trying to address an issue quickly and executing search warrants and then displacing that issue a little less. So, but we are actively still looking to address these issues. But I feel like, and what I'm hearing is that we've made progress with addressing a lot of those issues when it first came to me. So, hopefully, we're certainly gonna stay focused on those two things, traffic and drugs. And those would be our priorities. And I will say that we're also getting a lot of, a lot of people expressing interest in working ahead of officer, a full-time, one-to-three certified officer in the military, come in today asking who they're hiring, so that's good to see, that officers are willing to work at the Swan Village Police Department. So, a lot of people continuing to express interest. That's awesome.
I had a really great interaction with two of your officers on Friday night, they were very professional and you did a very thorough job, thank you.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Chief, what's the starting pay for an experienced officer that's coming in?
I would have to look to see exactly, so it's a little different at Swanton because we have level-two certified officers who are working full-time and level-three certified officers, so that we made a slight differentiation between those two. I wanna say level-two full-time is maybe around $25 and change.
An hour?
Yes. And then depending on their level of experience, it could go up to around $31 an hour. But those are just really rough.
Okay, thank you.
Rough numbers.
Anybody else have anything for Keith?
Thank you, awesome job.
Thank you.
Stay cool out there.
Uh, we also have the health officer's report, a couple incidents, I guess. I don't know about the cat issue, you know, it's supposed to be taking cats, but is that the one you were involved with?
No, I never received a call for a cat, so we never, never actually called animal control.
Anybody have any comments on that? Okay, then we'll go on to whole town business and we'll have the update on the LVRT to start with. I assume it's about the grant. And plus the.
No, it's more the, more the opening, well, it's Joel, Art is here. Oh, there you are. You've got some news on the grant.
Nothing major, the revised concept, we had that cat meeting and then we're going through the process of permitting, the big permit is the federal NEPA, which should not be a big event, it shouldn't be a big deal, but it just takes time, it should be a finding of no significant impact. And other than that, just from a grant perspective, everything's moving along fine. And I did meet on Wednesday morning, yesterday morning, Kevin, to go over the limits of clearing. Nothing has taken place that I know of today.
I would do a.
Well, they were, they were up there this morning, they cleaned up some of the dirt and stuff that was.
I saw that on Robin Hood cleaning up and so on.
They cleaned up that, and then they'll tackle the brush and the tary. Probably starting Monday. So what, just an update on the official celebration that's gonna occur on Saturday, a week from this Saturday, on the 15th. The events will start at 7:00 a.m. and will conclude by, on schedule, by 7:45 a.m. when the governor will embark, along with anybody who wishes to ride along with him on his way to St. John's Berry. Again, I get the, we have working out some of the details for the celebration, we've ordered some light refreshments and we're getting a variety of things, the state now, as far as we know, the state will provide the order lets, but I got some ordered, but when I get confirmation the state has, I'll cancel the order that I placed. And so it, of the group that, when we met a few weeks ago, that group, I scheduled a meeting for 9 o'clock next Wednesday morning. And that is, you know, things seem to be progressing along pretty well. So we're set and we just are hoping for good weather.
Gonna be noted that the governor and Senator Sanders are supposed to be there. So it's a pretty big thing for Swanton, of course, this rail trail is a big thing for Swanton too, so, you know, we, the community's welcoming to come. You know, and I think it'd be a good idea if we had a nice crowd there because it would show our elected officials that, you know, we're supportive of this and, you know, we're kind of moving forward with it. And I assume, because they're gonna be here, there'll be media here too.
Yes, there will.
Alright, so that means, you know, people outside of Swanton are gonna see Swanton, so it's a big thing.
They're expecting live media Saturday morning, they said they figured you're gonna have live media.
Yeah. The gentleman with ACCD office, Nate, who's there, he unfortunately is not gonna be here that day, he has a situation in the family, but, but he told me that Rebecca Kelly, who works in the press, shorts in the press office of the governor, she'll be here and she'll touch base with us and we'll get everything all set up with her, they're gonna have a banner, Richard Wobley, Dick Wobley, who was a very good, close personal friend with the governor, was, he was biking the route today and he came to Swanton, so he stopped in to see me here. And they're gonna be bringing an archway banner type to put over it, over the trail, so they'll be bringing all that, so.
Now, I don't know, it might be too late, but maybe we could put up some posters here and there, but we don't have, could we get some in time?
I've generated a flyer that I've been sharing on social media.
On the side of the road.
We might not have time today.
About the Swanton on the Move banner we've seen.
What's that?
About the banner that said Swanton on the Move, we've seen that show up at the Red.
I've read it.
Yeah.
I've got it.
You've got it. Yeah, that would be nice to have, put in somewheres in that area, on 78 probably.
Far as the Villas office.
So I'm gonna mark.
You gotta have some humor here.
Neil. Well, I agree. So you were gonna take care of that, Neil?
Yeah.
Alright. Wow, I would think you'd probably wanna put it.
On the trail?
No, out on 78, and then with directions to the, to the thing, because that's the other thing, you gotta be noted that part of Robin Hood Drive will be shut down during that period, from Short Street to Bushy Street. You know, and there will be, the highway department personnel is gonna help us and they're gonna direct traffic, there will be some cars that go through because, you know, the governor.
Funny parking on that block.
Yes, it's funny parking. But, you know, we just, it will be shut down, that section of the road, so I'm thinking to put it on 78, more people would see it. And then if, you can't tell me you can't get two or three or four campaign flags dumped and stuck in the ground.
I mean, I could try.
The village has community event signs, don't you?
Thanks, Betsy, yes, I'm sure we can help with that.
It's specific to the event, it might be a stretch, but I can call and find out.
Yeah, well, if not, maybe you could work with Bill to do on their community event things. You know, if you fill them out, we could use them. Right?
Of course, yes.
Okay, I will, I will touch base with Mr. Sheets tomorrow and we'll formulate a plan.
And we'll have it on the marquee, the card.
Yes, yes, it'll be on there too.
Should probably put it on sooner than later.
I mean, we could always ask a printer, if they know the governor's coming and they're doing it for the governor, maybe they'll like crank them out, but it's only, it's a week away.
Yeah, no.
I mean, it might be able to happen.
Matt Walker's.
I mean, if you wanna reach out to Matt and ask if they have capacity.
So, you want like five?
Yeah, that's plenty, you know, just coming in the major actors into the village area. Oh, are you, what would be kinda nice, if there were some kids that could be riding down the Dick Thompson Trail to there.
I've invited, I've invited children, it's quite early in the morning, so I will. I will keep inviting, if not, I will bring my children and dough and they will happily ride for you.
My daughter will be there too.
Well, we can ride them.
No, thank you. They're more than willing to do that.
Wow, I guess, you know, I mean because it would be the future and trail, both trails are there, I think it would, you know, the governor and the senator probably appreciate seeing that.
I'm, I've sent out to our database inviting children to drive.
Anybody else got any comments on that particular event? Questions?
I don't know, just one thing, I would say, Nicole, if you didn't mind, send out and ask some folks to respond if they're gonna show up with their kids, just to see if we get a commitment of 15 to 20 or whatever.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that tonight.
See if I can rassle a couple grandkids myself, so, but I just, that would be a good thing to see they had to respond back to you and say, we're coming, early, but we'll be there.
Okay, update on library heat installation, furnaces.
Okay, it was completed last week, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday, they have, the job is completed. It is running, haven't heard any complaints on that, so I assume that their people pool over there today would've been a good test for it.
Yeah, it's cold in there, I was just there.
Even they, last week they had one unit, one of the new units going and it was, it was very comfortable in there. So, that's done. And so, I hadn't seen a bill yet come in for the balance, but.
It just came in.
Oh, it just came in, okay. So anyways, it's done, it's working, they, we did use the same thermostats and we saved $900.
Now, that bill is, was no surprise to me, it was what we expected, what was quoted.
So that's the.
Before we move off, what about the toilet?
Okay. It's still working, but the new one has not been put in yet. But we're addressing that, and then the, I was on the phone today with Alliance to work about with the subphone in the elevator, so they're getting the elevator company and them together, and they're gonna get that fixed hopefully next week.
What about the flooding in the basement?
Oh, that occurred this week?
Uh, last week.
This past weekend.
I believe so.
Yeah, well, it flooded, I mean, it's not a flood, it was basically surface water that came in. Apparently we had like three and a half inches of rain one night. I slept through it and it did go in and leak and causing some, some of the stuff of the historical society, it got wet. But I think that's just surface water, I'm not sure what.
Yeah, we're probably getting down, yeah.
There's always, there's been a problem in that mechanical room, there's always been a little water getting in there anyway, so this, being such heavy rain.
We go to Subphone in that line?
Not there, no.
Sounds like we need to cut a trough, just get a subphone in there.
Well, has it ever been inspected, Abby seems to think there's some sort of foundation issue, has it ever been inspected? It was the first I had heard of it this morning, so.
No, I would, I would, could recall, it could be a foundation issue, I mean, had the same problem here in this building.
Right.
Joel, you were, any problems in the pass over there?
Library?
For the water coming in?
I think we could find a report that Ron had someone take a look at the site and had mentioned something about the surface water and tried to do some things to alter the flow of it, but I don't know if that was done or not, at that time.
Back when you were.
I think the report was even earlier than that, a few years earlier. But the SLAT board at that time wasn't as involved in the building maintenance as it is today, that whole agreement that took place, etc., that was, you know, past my time.
Okay, thank you.
I think we can dig that up and see if that's got some suggestions on how that water's getting in.
Well, after looking to get somebody to inspect that basement, then I guess that's probably the first place to start.
Yeah, I agree. But, it is Swanton and every basement has basically a problem.
Well, it, to some extent, yeah, but if they're, if they're. It's an old building, it's the old part, right?
Yeah, it's the old part.
So, you know what, you wanna be careful.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff down there, you don't wanna get ruined.
And it's used constantly, so it would be a great loss for the community if they had to close for an extended period of time due to water damage or mold or whatever.
Abby has got a dehumidifier down there and it's drying out, so. It's, I've seen much worse situations in other buildings that I was responsible for in the area. So, but it is a problem.
So, one is the one, we don't have to get the fire department to pump it out?
No, no.
But we just wanna make sure if it's a foundation issue, we don't wanna let it drag on to.
No, no.
But if it's not, then we'll be up again. Alright, we got the media summary for the county.
Yeah, I'm closed.
Do the RFP for the library.
Oh, that's right.
Get excited, girl.
Alright, we've uh, Brian has put together the.
Yeah, I just wanted. The best way I could think of looking at it, just before I send it. Wanted, I'll just adjust the dates on it. Basically, we want, seeking a solution and a proposal to address the issue. That's it, and the, the pre-bid meeting and then a date that this has to be received.
I'm gonna, Cody, you think you.
For the issue of ice on the building?
I get that. Alright, for sure, if somebody from the SLAT board is here, I'm gonna try to make it myself, but you never know.
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay, and I don't know if you wanna go too, Steve, you're usually in that area anyways, about 9:00 a.m. okay?
Where's that?
July 17th.
Yeah, I can, I'll go around here by that time.
Just to go over and see what they're saying. When you're gonna post this in the local papers, are there any other places you can post these?
I post a hard copy in this building and at the library, at the village office, and I can put it in front of forum, I believe, and on the website.
These are cities and towns?
These are cities and towns, yeah.
Alright, and we'll go back to the county carrier.
Yeah. So Christina prepared this for the meeting of the 20th. She did send it to the courier, they did not publish it, she's called them, they did not return a phone call, so. But anyways, we sent it and she want, and you know, just looking for your thoughts on it, I mean, it's pretty quick and right down to the point.
Well, you were talking about that front page form, didn't you show me that one?
We could send it there too.
Yeah. And if they want more information on a particular issue, just contact you.
Go to the website. Welcome board.
Yes, or go to the website. What do you guys think? I mean, we can, I guess it has to be gone, but it does, by the way, all the major things that were brought up at that meeting.
They're too inclined, I like it.
Let's see what it is.
Alright, town credit card account.
Okay. Couple of meetings ago, we had asked to open a new credit card through Community Bank NA. And I went out and I made the application and started the process both for the town as well as the rec committee. And so I brought with me three copies of the last three years' town reports they asked for, and we went through the whole deal. And now they sent further information, because they're not the ones that actually service that account, they sell, it's the National Bank of Omaha that is the provider. They in turn have asked for financial statements and income statements, which of course they, from the town reports I gave them. So, lo and behold, what has transpired since, a local bank for People's Trust Company is now offering credit card services.
Yeah, I see that.
So, we have, Kathy made a phone call and so we're gonna withdraw the application to Community Bank NA, we're already approved, we've submitted an application to People's Trust Company, but I am looking for offer, basically I need from this board is, I suppose to be, very clean on this, is to direct me to cancel or to withdraw the application with Community Bank NA and then to go ahead and get a credit card through People's Trust Company. The credit limit, and we didn't ask for this credit limit, but they put the credit limit on the town's card at $14,000.
Was the old one 10?
Well, we originally were gonna go with 10, but they just, when they looked at our financial stuff, they come up with 14, so it's not a big, it's sometimes nice to have in case.
Is it competitive, interest wise and cash back?
Yeah, the interest rate, we pay them off every month anyway, so, but yeah. And they're local and it's, I can get the statement online, so we can get that, you can heat track online, so.
Okay, motion been made by Steve, did somebody?
I did.
Ads, I can do it. Alright, motion been made and seconded, is there any more discussion? If not, a little favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, now we're gonna go on to new town business and we got a eighty-nine-one-one new road name.
Okay, what um I gotta catch up here. What um, uh, there's a, basically, it was a, uh, some there's been a new subdivision off from Maple Grove Estates, and it's a three-law, and uh, so it basically, it has a, um, its own road, if you would, uh, and that classifies under nine-one-one as a road. First of all, we, we have no numbers available to be able to fit three more on that side of the road of Country Club or of Maple Grove Estates. So, I said to Amy, well, that's gonna have to be a separate street, a street name, so, keeping with the nine-one-one. Uh, the developer, who was Mr. James Foster, labeled out three of their choices, beginning with the preferred one, uh, Eli Lane, and then North Maple Lane and Dancing Maple Lane. Um, the, uh, I checked their, um both of these, or all three of these, uh, would be acceptable under the nine-one-one, they've uh, uh, liked to go with that first, first one, because they always put their preferred one first, so, um.
Second avenue.
So, we just looking for any questions or need a motion to do that, or?
I moved up, we proved that Eli Lane.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? If not, all over the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right.
And then
and the other thing they'll run you up to the second?
Yeah.
Resolution.
So, this is the resolution, basically, it says, um, Betsy will open the account, she can, uh, she'll do depositing, she'll be able to transfer between the accounts, because it's their account. Um, I'm gonna be the second signer for her on this, and so that's basically what it is.
All right, need a motion?
So, if she's not there, only if something should happen, if she's not there, then, otherwise, I won't be signing the checks.
Why, why you like doing that? Did you sign it up for? Anybody got any comments or questions?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, uh, you need a motion that we prove this, uh, resolution?
Sign the resolution, yeah.
I'll make a motion, sign the resolution. People's Trust Company.
At the half of the rec department.
I'll be happy. At the half of the rec department.
Second?
Second.
All right, motion been made and seconded, one little discussion before, if there's anything else, a wall, uh, all over the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, uh we got a lot of people here, I don't know if we wanna, we're not making skip by number six, unless some.
I know, I don't really.
Yeah, I don't have it, it's just a couple of things that we could talk about, but because we have uh other important issues, we'll go by that, and uh, what, you have any really updates on that Swan Hill Road, Berry Road?
Well, this isn't what, uh, this isn't about the repairs for, and it's actually a renaming thing, so, I can, we can do that after these people.
Okay. All right, one other thing is, I wanted to note that in the minutes of the meeting, uh, we followed up with Kim Jensen.
Jensen, yeah.
And she is gonna notify us of the grant schedules for that farm-based invasive species survey. We don't know what the schedule is right now, but I was asked by a resident down here, so, I wanna note that in the minutes that we expect to hear something from her in the near future. Okay, now we go on to the discussion with the Village Trustee, Swan Recreation Commission, and mostly this is gonna do about what the future is gonna be. So, uh, we've had our proposal, but the rec commission has presented us for a facility uh, on the present, uh, site. Uh we're, we're looking at that proposal, uh, and I don't know how well people in Swan know the proposal and what's being proposed, so we're trying to get more public input into this, and our first step was to see how the officials here that are involved with it, the village and the recreation people, if we can, how do we move forward to come up with some kind of master plan, because there's other issues, there's Fourth Street property, uh, Moab L. Trailhead, uh, things like that, they gotta come together. And at this point in time, I am going to ask Nicole to step down from the board.
Step away from my chair, I'm not stepping down from the board.
Uh, because she has a, a presentation on, on a long time.
I just wanna talk about recreation, and I feel like it's better suited, uh, from the other side of the table, as the executive director from the rec department than as a select board member.
Can I just say something first off, Betsy Fournier?
Yeah.
Chair of the Swan Recreation Department. Uh, so, thank you for calling this meeting, I think it's gonna be a great starter conversation for the future of, uh, recreation in Swanton. Um, but I just wanna kinda touch on Earl, like, we haven't brought a lot of information to the community because we don't have a lot of information because of the feasibility study. Um, so, once we get all our ducks in a row and all our pieces to the puzzle together, then we will bring out this plan to our community. So, I don't want the community to think that we're not giving them the information they deserve, because they do, because they are the taxpayers of Swan, we wanna make sure that they have all the information upfront in their hands, so that they can make a decision that's gonna best suit them and our community as whole. Um, so, we're waiting on some information to move forward, um, but Nicole has put together a lot of great information that we already have in our community, and that is right at our hands, um, and great community assets that we already have, um, and we just wanna expand on that opportunity to our community. So, Nicole, how's the floor?
Um, and I, and I think it's a really great time to discuss that, so for those of you that don't know, Nicole Raper, I'm the executive director of Swan Recreation. Um, recreation is incredibly special to Swan, we are full of natural resources, we've got some really fabulous assets, both in the village and in the town. Um, some are underutilized, and I, and I think there's ways and methods for us to utilize them better, so, you know, I was really excited to see that the select board wanted to have this meeting of the joint bodies to discuss what recreation's going to look like for our community moving forward. And I think as Swanton continues to grow, you know, recreation is gonna be something that we can highlight in our community that, that's never going away, and that's gonna bring people here, that's gonna make Swanton a destination, that's gonna help our economy grow, that's gonna build our tax base, that's gonna be able to, to help us afford, to upkeep, maintain, and to continue to build upon the great things that we already have here. So, you know, talking points, because I'll just ramble if I don't. So, um, you know, one of, one of the things for me every day that's so important about recreation is, is I get to support community, I get to make meaningful relationships, not only with all of you in this room, but with all of the community members present, so, as we continue to talk about this, whether it be the, the rec facility, whether it be Marble Mill, whether it be the Fourth Street property, Swan Beach, the Lower Valley Rail Trail, this is our opportunity to all come together as that one Swanton that everybody, you know, wants to have, and all work together to, to create these really great things and to continue to make Swanton a destination. So, a, as most of you know, um, we do a lot of youth athletics, we're, we're working on building opportunities for adults to be engaged in, and not only a, um, a healthy lifestyle, but to just increase general wellness by supporting them with resources, um, educational opportunities as well as recreational opportunities, but, but we need space, and we really need to look at the assets that we have now, and, and as we sit here and talk about a master plan for recreational facilities, I think that as a whole and as a group, we all need to look at all of our recreational assets in town, um, because I think if we're all working together, we can make some really special things happen for our community, and, and really let people know in the state of Vermont that Swanton is a fabulous place to be, we are all wonderful people, and, and I am so, um, I feel so lucky every day when I get to wake up and I get to represent everybody in this room. So, that, that's why I, I really wanted to step away from this table and share as the rec director, because I think, um, you know, it's, it's really important. So, the, the National Parks and Recreation Association has a marketing campaign right now, um, as it is Parks and Recreation Month, where community grows. So, what a better time than now to talk about how we can utilize those recreational assets. Um, and, and I, I've asked some of you in this room before, but I'd really love you all to think about this, email me, let me know, unless you wanna talk about it now, what do you think Swan's community values are, and how can we highlight that with recreation? Um, I, you know, there's, like, again, there's so many beautiful things going on here, from community members doing walking groups, to potluck dinners, to, um, educational opportunities, our library is cranking out phenomenal things, the Historical Society has some really great programs that they offer, the Abenaki are doing some phenomenal things in the community again. You know, how, how do we pull those all together and, and, and shine? Um, and then, seven dimensions of well-being, when you look at, and I have a bag full of studies, if anybody wants to look at them, or if you wanna stop at my office and look at them, because I research, because I'm invested, because I love this and I love this community, you know, about what dimensions are to recreation, because it's not just getting out there and playing every day. You know, there's cultural avenues for recreation, there's economic, there's emotional, environmental, intellectual, physical, and a social aspect. And I think, you know, oftentimes, when we talk about a community center, we're just focused on one particular view of recreation, or when we talk about, you know, our park system, it's just, you know, we're, we're looking at it in a very small lens. So, I'm asking everybody here to really broaden their lens, so they can really encompass and see what recreation has to offer. You know, so by creating a master plan, you know, I think we have the opportunity to sit down and talk about what we want not only short-term goals to be, but long-term goals as far as all of our assets, because if we don't start planning now, we're gonna keep ending up in this same loop that it seems like we're in, where there's been change of leadership, things have, things have fallen two steps behind, where instead of continually falling two steps behind, we need to move two, three, four, or five steps forward. Um, one of the things that I have worked really hard at with the Swan Recreation Facility is to create a maintenance plan, to, to create something that if a community member were to walk in and say, what's going on here, why aren't your, why aren't your lawns mowed, I can tell them, well, it's scheduled for this day a week, because we have X, Y, and Z prioritized. You know, I, I get calls about other assets in the community, and, and sometimes it's hard to say, well, let me find out, because I either have to call the village, or I have to call the town, or I have to call whomever, and it, it's, you know, sometimes it's confusing for me, it's really confusing for our community at large, and it's incredibly confusing for our visitors. So, I think today we have an opportunity to, to really discuss and talk about, um, and I, I'm sure we don't wanna make it too long, because I don't know, it's nice and air-conditioned in here, so I'm enjoying it, but, um, you know, what does that look like for all of us? What information do we as governing bodies need to know to make the best informed decision for the community on recreation? You know, I'm the person out there that, I don't wanna say I talk to the majority of the people, but when I left the rec department tonight, there were hundreds of people there, you know, from all over the state, complimenting how, how well we're doing. You know, what other kinds of information does, do you as governing bodies need for us to make these, these informed decisions to continue to grow and improve upon these things? You know, what immediate actions can we take to identify the levels of service that Swanton currently provides regarding our parks, open trails, outdoor recreation? How do we elevate that, get to the next level? I don't wanna make these decisions by myself, I shouldn't be making these decisions by myself, so I'm asking you all in this room to help me make those decisions. Um you know, I, I, in my packet of information, and I, I won't continue to go on and on and on and on and on and on and on. Um, you know, I have funding strategies put out there, from, from grants to, to fundraisers to, you know, we've got a really great team of, of people working at the rec department, and we have, you know, some really great ideas, but I, you know, we need to be doing it all together. So, you know, I don't know that you wanna get into that now, but I think our first step is really looking at what we wanna accomplish with our recreational assets, and then creating, you know, not a master plan, but a maintenance plan, you know, so we can all work together to accomplish those goals, so we can have these really phenomenal things that we can share with the governor, share with the senator, share with the people that are coming into, into the state, into the country, and making them wanna stop here. You know, once they stop and they, they ride that trail, they're starting here, they're not stopping here, they're getting on the trail and they're going to St. John's Creek, but we want them to stop here, we want them to start on that end and come to Swanton and enjoy Swan. We want them to go out to the Wildlife Refuge and experience how beautiful our community is, we want them to shop in our downtown. So, it, it, it all goes hand in hand in hand. So, again, I'm not gonna continue to go on, because I'd love to hear from the rest of you, um, but something I did do today with my team is I sent our seasonal maintenance guy out, who does not live in Swanton, um, and I asked him to take a look at our parks and, and to tell me what he thought honestly and real, and I, and I gave him a checklist, and, and he had some concerns, you know, but he also felt that there were things that, that if we worked together, that we could come to some real easy solutions on them. And again, I, I asked all of you in this room to help be a part of that solution. So, thank you.
Good job, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. Uh you brought up a lot of interesting things, and uh, we're, we're still not gonna solve all the problems tonight, but I think there's two parts to this, the way I'm, after listening to you, there is a, a new way of doing recreation in Swan, a new, maybe pot, potentially a new type of organization, uh, which has seen a part.
It's a partnership, it doesn't have to be a whole new organization.
Uh, but then again, we also still, and how we're gonna prioritize what we do in the future, but I, I think that we all know that we have to do something facility-wise. So, there's two parts, uh, you know, and what we do facility-wise should fit into what we have for a master plan.
When you say master plan, Earl, do you mean for recreation as a whole, or just the rec department?
Well, I believe that it may be more, maybe parks and recreation, that's it. As a possibility sometime in the future, uh, might be a more efficient way of doing things. Because we met, should efficiency right now, is because everything's, you gotta go here, you gotta go there, so, that might be one issue that could come up, but uh, you know, that's just lost my thought, I mean, it's gonna take more than, you know, because other people have different opinions, that's fine. You know, we're gonna discuss it, and, you know, probably try to put something together, I mean, it's a lot of work, and I agree that a lot of times, these things are great, we have this great discussion, and then actually, nothing happens.
I'm, I'm dedicated to this discussion, and I will be a thorn in everybody's side, because I.
I don't think you have to worry about that, it being a sales subject, so.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying, there's, there's two parts here, there's the facility, and then, you know, what the future of, uh, Swan Recreation is gonna look like, and that's where the master plan comes in, but the facility is gonna fit with that master plan.
Well, then, we're having the conversation premature, because I think we need to evaluate the municipal plan before we make a master plan on, on anything.
Wow, there's a new, new town plan coming out.
Next, next week.
And in the municipal plan for years has been a recreational facility, it's been in there and it's never moved forward.
Yeah.
And the same with outdoor recreation.
So, it's been in the plan.
Yeah.
It just has not flourished.
Go ahead, Candy.
So, recreation is so important right now, it's a health issue, you know, we're, we have a big problem, health problem. Um, we have a big problem with young people not moving around, sitting around at home doing this, um, so.
Well, I understand, you know, it's not, uh, we don't under, we realize we need to do something, okay?
It's not another time.
But we don't wanna do something that, you know, twenty-five years down. But we don't want to do something that, you know, 25 years down the road we're sorry for. Okay? And that's, you know, I mean, we've seen a proposal for a facility. And there's some people that are concerned that maybe that's not the best place to put that facility. But we're going to be living with that the rest of our lives. So if we want to do something, right now we haven't spent much money. If we want to come up with a plan that more people are, have consensus with and might feel it's a better place to have this facility. We're not going to say no, we're, you know, because we gotta do something.
Have there been suggestions of the paltry sites?
There's been some discussions, but right now I think it would be to our disadvantage to get specific here tonight. Because it's going to involve real estate.
You said it's to our advantage or disadvantage?
It would be to our disadvantage.
Well, I don't, I really think this conversation should have been had way before now. Cause we're already moving forward. I don't want to go backwards.
What do you mean by moving forward?
Well, we, we've started, we've had the plan, you guys reviewed it, then you asked for more information, we gave it to you, and now we're moving on to a feasibility study that we have no idea what the outcome is. So I think before we start having a conversation about location, um, we need to see what that study is going to tell us, um, and then work with the community on location.
I think the study is going to help us make the decision, but I don't think it's going to lead us to the ultimate decision. And a couple of things that I think we need to be aware of. First of all, we all agree the rec department does a tremendous job and we can't stumble on anything that you've done. But we, Earl hit it right on the head. And we still see things that we're acting on today that had we looked at it differently years ago, we probably wouldn't have made the same decision, but that's way behind us. But we also have to look at structural issues as we look at this master plan. One thing that I, I don't think we want to do is duplicate buildings. If we've got facilities within our community that we can use as part of the rec department, like the school gymnasia and things, then we should be looking at those.
That would be ideal, but we can't use that space.
Don't, don't say can't, Mrs. Fongier, because we own those schools, okay? There's got to be a way that we can make this thing work.
But I can't hold senior classes during the day for, for our aging adults in the school buildings because the school's occupied.
Okay.
Or toddler programs because the school's occupied.
Let's not throw up roadblocks. Let's just talk about the, the big picture at this point. So I think we need to look at the master plan and I'm glad we're discussing it tonight. The village has to be part of our team. The rec department has to be part of our team and the select board is part of that team and anybody else that wants to come forward. So I think the discussion is well timed and let's not get bogged down. That's my, let's just move this master plan discussion forward.
We don't have a master plan.
Hold on, hold on. I'm going to give Joel a chance and then I will get back to you, but I want some input from the village after Joel, okay? Give him time to think.
Couple of years ago, we came to the select board. We got a Forest Street property. And whether or not that was going to be sold for housing or what were some of the other things that could be done before it. And we were given about a year to work that. And we submitted a report to the select board, the members at the time. And then we went ahead and started looking at alternatives. There are five sites that have been looked at for that facility. And then the money came down under ARPA. And we made a decision, we, the select board, people in Swan who participated in the select board, who came to the meetings, made a decision to go ahead and start looking at building a facility, which included a gym because of some of the issues of availability and stuff. And the, the rec committee decided on the location. Okay? But a lot of information came before the select board that was operating at the time, trying to move this stuff forward. And to me, it looks like we're just trying to delay. And I understand and I love the fact there's so much support up there for the rec. But if it's just the location, let's have that meeting and discussion and not talk about it. You know, hiring somebody probably for a master plan and stuff and just delaying this. The ARPA money has a limit to when it's going to be spent by. It's locations is an issue, maybe the size of the building. And let's get together and talk about it and not say, let's have a master plan, which maybe we've got to wait for the town plan to be approved. And then, and then say, okay, let's get the master plan. There's a lot of information we gathered over the years and some of you were, members weren't here at the time and just haven't asked for that information. But let's, let's be careful here. There's a lot of things, there's so much brain power in this room that could be worked out to move forward without maybe hiring somebody for a rec master plan, which will probably get into your bag of other reports and just die right there. Cause I, I think there's enough brain power to get this moving, to get them the help they need. And I do like the idea of a parks and recs department somehow, some way. I fully support that, but I'm just kind of passionate right now. We got the other piece.
Do you want to speak?
Not yet.
Okay, then I got to go back to the gentleman in behind you, Gordon. He had his hand up just before you, then you're next.
I was on train of thought listening to Joel, so.
Oh, okay. Well, then.
I think you had some good points, Joe.
Oh, man. Yeah, you're all right.
I, I think, I've said this from the beginning. I mean, I think the best thing and the best money you can spend right now is on a master plan. And I think that's what will move things forward and move things forward in a timely manner. You know, if we can, uh, I know we went for a grant one time for a master plan of the rec and I know there's a lot of people in this room that we have a lot of ideas and brain power that could sketch it out on paper. But I think if someone, if there, there's people, we, we spent a lot of money so far, I assume on an engineer, working on, no, we haven't.
Not yet, not yet.
We're, we're going to spend money. I assume someone has done this, someone's done some work, I think, but, uh, to just master plan where and, and include real estate that might be around the, the facility. Include Forest Street in that master plan. Include, uh, something that it might show a different location for the building. Maybe the best location for the building is exactly where they proposed it. But if you take the time, spend a little money at the beginning, get everyone in that room that has, uh, some skin in the game to look at it, I think you're going to, you're going to solve a lot of your back and forth issues. We're going to be able to lay a master plan out on the table. There might be someone that comes up with an idea that says, move the, move the maintenance garage down to where the soccer field is. And maybe that turns out and it doesn't seem like we want to move a building, but that may turn out to be the most cost-effective way and your building comes up in a different location. So I, I just think to go and spend that money, I think that would be money well-spent in my opinion and you would have that master plan to work for, for not just this building, but other things in the future.
All right.
I mean, we created this-
Joel, make it short, Joel.
I'll make it real short. I think we're confusing maybe this whole master plan and just looking, because what I'm hearing is this whole concern about where this facility might go. And we don't need to spend lots of money. We already paid to have someone look at those sites. Can show you a building layout there. Plus we can take other existing maps and sit down and just work this out. But if you're looking for a whole master rec plan, I understand that, but there's, there's two issues that are being discussed.
Can I just say one more?
Yeah, so I did say there was two issues here.
No, I already did.
Absolutely.
There's one more thing on the, uh, including Forest Street and that building. Cause we worked together on the Forest Street property. And when that, uh, came back that that wasn't a location for the building, I think it was just the select board at the time that said that wasn't a feasible location for the time, for the building. I'm not sure that that was ever vetted out much farther than them just saying, no, Forest Street would work.
It'll fit there with limited parking.
Yeah.
And so there, it was shown that it could fit there.
Well, we have parking across the street. I mean, I assume.
Well, that's a school.
At the school.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right.
The school doesn't have enough parking right now. I mean, you, you drop your kids off there.
Oh, yeah.
There's, when there's an event there, there's no parking.
Well, there, certainly there are a lot of issues here and, uh, there are some things, you know, that I don't want to discuss in open meeting right now. Because it'll, it'll not be in our, in the community's best interest as part of one of the plans that, you know, we could look at. And I think we need to do that at some point in time and maybe tonight's a good night to, but I, if it gets out and everybody in town knows about it, I think we're going to lose the opportunity to do it.
I'm sorry, what does that mean?
What gets out?
Yeah.
What are you talking about?
What?
What gets out?
If what gets out, we're going to lose the opportunity.
If we're, if we're talking on real estate issues.
I think he's, they're real estate issues.
Yeah.
Talk to the rec and executive position.
Real estate's not a problem. You got to have a plan first. I mean, don't get me wrong, this, this thing has gotten so confusing because it's been let, let go for so long and nobody's stuck with it. With, this was supposed to be a rec center, there's supposed to be a community center. What the hell is it going to be? Is it going to be a combination of both? That's what this study is, I assume, going to tell us.
Yeah, the feasibility study's going to look into that, yes.
But we're, we're all in Swan, so real estate's not a problem. You can put it wherever you want to put it, as if it's approved.
Yeah, that is true.
I might say, I'm blowing our, both our horns a little bit. As far as nobody knowing what's going on, this new website that the town and the village coordinated with, you, if you don't know what's going on in Swan now, you're never going to know. And you've got to look to know what's going on in Swan. So there, there's the first, uh, work together. Our, our website, we put it together and real estate, the building's supposed to go on Village Property, I don't think that will be an issue if it's the proper site. We've got to decide if that's a proper site for it.
Yes.
And function, what, like I said, is this going to be just a rec center? Is it going to be a community center? So we're going to have a, a combination of usable areas? We've got to know that before we go to an engineer.
Hey, I want to address that.
Earl, go ahead, Joel.
Again, a couple of years, and I, I know we came to you guys about the property, but we had a floor plan. It's a very specific floor plan that we have folks. It is a community center, it is a rec center, a combination community rec center. Designed for all ages to participate in. So I, I just want to clear that confusion, if there's any confusion out there.
I mean, as we said right now-
We have a very specific floor plan with a very specific estimate on how much it would cost, et cetera. We're waiting to go to the public because the feasibility study and then we could give a lot more information. We haven't hidden anything. We've come to the select board over and over and over again to discuss this project.
When's the feasibility study due?
Uh, the end of September or before? The end?
Oh.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Joel, but, uh, you know, I mean, there's always the left and right, okay? I don't feel as a select board member I had any input into the design of that building.
I'm not sure where you came in the process, Earl. I think it was later.
No, when I came in the process, you, you presented a drawing here, which is fine. And I'm, you know, we need a community, we need a rec center. But, well, you know, is that going to be the final thing? Who knows?
Right, but that's how far along we were with the process. I wasn't trying to shove it to any, in anybody's face and say, this is it. We had brought several over a period of a couple of years. This type of work takes years from day one. Where I used to work, it was five years. You want a new facility? Five years. That's what it takes. What happened is many members of the board changed, so you didn't have all the background.
Yeah.
It wasn't like anyone was trying to pull anything and say you didn't have any input. We had it all in front of the select board and we showed them the layout. So that's, that's what's so frustrating right here.
I understand. Okay, Joel, if you feel that way, uh-
I'm just, I'm just trying to say we're not on anything.
I want you to, I want you to be very, to understand something very important here. You think that if the select board agrees with this, then you start building tomorrow.
No, 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 I don't.
It doesn't make any difference. The voters are going to have to approve it.
I fully understand that. We were going to work a public relations campaign at the right time. We were trying to get a certain amount of information to even know it could be done before that took place. So again, I'm not trying to say anybody on the board.
Okay.
I'm just trying to lay the timeline when I hear certain comments being made.
All right, what I'm trying to, to say and I guess I'm getting misunderstood here is you want to come up with a final design, what you want, put it out to the voters.
We had voters in cooperation. We, we had, it was almost three years ago, we had a whole public event to get input. So again-
Yeah, but did they approve a specific design and a specific location? No. The concept, they approved. Everybody jumped into that and I agree. I mean, we've got to do something. But you're saying you're going, you want to put this specific plan before the voters as is?
That was the task the select board approved and had me working on. That has all changed now and I understand that. I understand Steve's concern. So I've worked with the board, but that was the task I was given and helping the rec department, getting paid this much. So yes, there's a little bit of sensitivity. And if we want to change the location, let's have the discussion and do it.
Well, what I'm saying is I think we're going to have more success and get this done if we bring in people before we go for the vote. And, you know, and you can say we wait for the impact study and all that. We don't have to wait. We can get community input. You've already got a design. We can have that, show the picture.
Bro, we asked you to do that about 50 meetings ago. We wanted to go for it.
Well, all right then, let's do it. I don't think that's, I don't remember that happened, uh, you know, but we'll do it.
You told us just what not, we had to stop because you wanted to have this feasibility study. And I honestly don't think this is the time to have this conversation.
When do you want to have it?
We're, this is to talk about some, the village and the town are here and this rec to talk about, I don't even know what.
Well, this is a-
Like, I'm really confused.
All right, Betsy, this is the biggest issue the rec had. This is the biggest issue the rec has is getting a new facility. So that's going to be at the top of every discussion, okay? And the village is here because it affects the village too and, uh, you know, so that, this is a big part of the discussion and it's going to continue to be. Well, the lady had her hand up.
Siobhan Cooper, hello, guys. Hi. I've been volunteering in the community for two years now. Um, gotten to know a lot of you, helped several meetings, you get to know, um, I, I work with the communications committee with Swan Enhancement Project. Um, I've made a passion of mine to get out here in the community, to meet you all, to see what needs you have, to work on that, et cetera. Um, I've been here since the beginning of the ARPA meetings, public meetings, asking about what the community want, community wanted more recreation, et cetera. I know, I don't remember who, but from the get-go, there's one person on the board that did not vote for the $600,000 on the side, uh, to be put on the side. Um, I know that it's been time and time again, you talk about asking for community input. We've gotten community input. They ask for feasibility, feasibility's in the way. I feel like a lot of times it's another thing after another that keeps getting put ahead instead of coming together and doing whatever it is because I don't know the process. I'm not an accountant, I don't know how the taxes work. Have you given a number to the taxpayers about how much it will be raised? Is it, you know, for example, under the $300,000 last year rate, it would have been like $111 per taxpayer? Like, do they know that that's all you're asking in the end if you get a bond vote? That was when the facility was at 1.5. Now it's up to 3.5. You say things like, like Steve, 25 years down the road, you don't want to have to regret it. I could never see a community center and bringing the community together be a regret. I don't, I don't know how anybody would. Um, I also just offhandedly this morning, I created a poll on Swanton's most active community discussion group page. It only up there eight hours and I am full willing to go knocking door to door. Let's really get some people out here. Let's hold it at the village next time for public. That way we can actually fit people together. But as of 5:40 PM, 91 votes in eight hours, seven comments, 16 shares. We have 56 people say yes, new recreation facility. 10 people say no, no to new recreation facility. 15 people, I would like to hear more options. Eight people, I do not know enough to voice an opinion. Two people, non-Swanton resident, but would utilize programs if available. And zero people voted, non-Swanton resident, would not utilize programs if available. Now, my dudes, this poll just started eight hours ago and it is an online poll. It's basic, it's primitive, it's not, you know, you know, it's act- Now, my dudes, this poll just started eight hours ago, and it is an online poll, it's basic, it's primitive, it's not, you know, you know, exact, but. Fifty-six percent yes. I know, I know you guys, like, earlier you said that people who think the placement of the facility is a bad idea. I don't, I mean, I get how executive section and real estate and all that works, but at the same time, I'd like to know who these people are, and can they come here? And tell us why they think it's bad. I want the people who are against this to come in and give us their reason for why it doesn't work. I was on the fence with the N V U side more.
I understand what you're saying, and, you know, that's, you're, we're all in favor of doing something. And something is gonna get done. And maybe what, what you're proposing right now, I don't know for sure, but we got a lot of work to do. And I do think that if we're gonna go forward with this, is that we should schedule another one of them public input sessions.
Can we work together, all of us, and I'll help with this? Um, my numbers and math, I'm good at math, but I'm not an accountant, I'm good with words. Like, let's get some information out there to the public, that's in layman's terms. You know, things are abbreviated, like, I'm gonna ask later, what is the A C C C? Like, I'm gonna ask you later, Brian. Um, but, um, what exactly are we talking about? Because everything is so all over the place. What are we trying to tell the people? What can we tell the people right now?
Well, right now, what we can tell the people is they have a diagram, they have a, a, a rough, that can be, people can look at.
Mm-hmm.
At a public.
And a concept, right?
Right, the concept, with the location, proposed location, it's got everything there. So that's what we can discuss, and that's what we need to discuss.
And I get understanding, like, do you want, like, input on specific design and things like that? Who makes the decision on the design? Is that something that we allow everybody in the public, like, I don't like the bathroom on this side, I'd prefer it over here, or like, what is that?
Wow, well, when, when we get to that bridge, we're awesome, okay?
So let me just say, we were gonna run a full campaign to promote this project. We were gonna give them everything. The concept, the, how much it was, no, we were, we're prepared to move that forward.
Okay.
We stopped. You asked us to stop.
All right, now we're gonna start that public campaign. Well, you gotta do it at some point in time, one way or the other, cuz.
But you don't even have your study. That you wanted so badly, and we spent twenty thousand dollars on.
I know we'll have the study, but, you know, I think people need to take a look at where it's gonna be.
I get that, Earl, so why didn't you let us do that before we spent all this extra money on something that we didn't need to do? We should have gotten the public input first. You should have let us run this damn campaign. I'm sorry, I'm extremely angry. I have been the chair of this board for almost nineteen years. I have watched this community grow. And we're growing because people need more, they want more, we are at a capacity. We're not doing this because we just, as a board, wanna do this. We're doing this cuz the community is asking for it.
We understand that something has to be done.
I don't think you understand.
Yeah, actually we do, but, but it is, and what, and I know it's not gonna happen anywhere near as fast as you want it to happen, I understand that. And not even as fast as I'd like to see it happen, but it will happen.
Well, I need the board to stop talking out of two sides of your mouth and make a decision to move forward.
All right, we're moving forward, we're gonna get public input.
After we spent this money on a feasibility study that you asked us to do, and we're not even gonna have the information that you wanted us to put into this study.
We're looking at the concept right now, we're not talking any numbers at this present time, Betsy.
You just wanted public input.
We're just wanting to get the concept out there, we want people to realize what's being proposed and get some of their input, that's all.
Your first question they're gonna have is how long?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, we have a rough estimate on that, but that's, the issue is, you know, it gives them a chance to see what's going on.
And every year grows, I'm not sure.
I, I'd like to try to build both thoughts together here. Let's, if you want the community input, then you have to wait until September. All right, because that feasibility study, right, is gonna talk about annual operating costs, et cetera. It's gonna have that type of detail.
Also, we're gonna talk about utilization of the services, whether we have enough services to offer. Um, it's, it's gonna give us a good insight into how many people would be utilizing the services and what kind of income we could generate. I think it's gonna be a very useful tool.
I think it's gonna be useful to take our campaign forward.
I don't, I don't, I can't see having a public meeting for input if we don't have that piece of it.
Well, absolutely.
We have all the physical piece of building the building, we have the layout that was, was agreed upon, it could be changed slightly. But we've had, again, you think in about five years, we've already gone two. So if we go back too far, then we can start that whole clock over again. But I think, and I'm just trying to say, I think that feasibility study should be part of any public input.
Well, that's fine, we can wait till we get the study, but we're gonna have to have the public input.
But if I may, from all of the information that was requested of the rec department for the feasibility study, was based upon the concept at the location that we proposed in the original plans that the select board had given.
To go ahead with.
To go ahead with, so any information in that feasibility study is gonna be relative to the proposed location at, at the rec department now. So if, if we're having discussions now about that's not where the community wants the location, then we need to produce that information to the folks doing the feasibility study. So we're not wasting that X amount of dollars, so they can say, okay, yes, it's feasible to have a community center, but they're basing everything on the design and concept plan that, that the rec board has already submitted to the, the consultant. So, then, are, you know, then we're gonna take the two steps backwards again. If we've changed the location, we're gonna have to go back and readjust the feasibility study to, to make sure that it's meeting the needs of the, the location that's proposed. So, I think we need to, there's twenty-two people in this room. You know, I think we have a pretty fair idea of, of who is for it in its current location and who's not for it in this location. That's, that's, I think the holdup right now, everyone wants this, everyone, you know, wants to move forward, but, you know, I'm, I'm hearing from, from some that that location isn't the right location. Tell me why, tell me why it's not the right location. We have parking, we have space, we have, uh, uh, all of the additional recreation facilities are not even, are even there, or connected via the trail system or the sidewalk system. Already to, to that existing location, why isn't that the ideal place?
That's why they're having a feasibility study.
That's not why.
The feasibility study, might tell them they can't have it.
That's not why they're doing this.
Just cuz you want it there, doesn't mean that it has to happen.
I, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily want it there.
But if, if you don't wait for the feasibility study, which has already been paid for, you're, you're trying a lot again.
But we've, we've submitted the concept plans for the, for the site and location that was proposed by, to the select board originally. That we've, we've already come to discuss about, and, and it was said that we would move forward on, on that particular location. So, if there are concerns about the location, now's the time that we need to discuss that, so we can get the relevant information to the feasibility study to make sure that it's coming back to the community with the appropriate information.
I don't think a lot, if something would change, but it would only be the numbers, and it should be able to go into that model. If the land price has to be put in there, or something else has to be put in there, that's, you know, if you're keeping the same facility with the same use, that part's not gonna change, no matter where you put the facility.
But the feasibility study isn't for what's currently, currently happening at the rec department, it's, it's for a facility.
I know, that's what that fee, yeah, for our facility, but if, as long as we have, end up with a facility that has the same use as what they are using for their study, it doesn't make any difference where we put the facility. The numbers, you know, that aren't gonna change, as far as usage and, you know, all that.
I, I understand, but it, but it does make a difference, because the information that has been asked so far is being provided for the concept plan that was designed to go at the proposed location, that we've all been working on, that we've come to the select board, that we've had meetings for about.
So what I'm saying, Nicole, is, what's, the numbers you put, or people that are gonna be using services, what other people might need to use the facility, so they're basing all that income cash flow on those numbers. Where the facility is, doesn't really make any difference to them unless there's another cost.
Location, location, location.
Yeah.
It's everything. And if I may, uh, first two questions people ask when they're coming to a meeting is, what are the schools like? And then what are the recreation opportunities available? Because they wanna know, uh, about what they're gonna raise their family, uh, in. Right now, we, we have some issues, um, and I think everybody would agree, that currently has kids in school. We have, um, families leaving the area, uh, specifically their students, for different opportunities. Uh, student athletes, uh, shipping off to other schools, and that's a greater remote problem that's happening as well. Um, and I think those are some concerns that we should have, so I think we need to be, we need to have the foresight to plan the swan we want, and not the swan we currently have, right? So, if that center's set up right, then we can grow into it, uh, or continue to grow into it more than what we're at. Have we turned kids away this year for summer camps? Last year we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we haven't done that this year, how many of those kids went to another camp? That, because they didn't have the availability, availability there, or we didn't have a plan to put them undercover during a lightning storm, right? And we have to go to the library, and we have to go to the church, and we have to try to get into the school, uh, those different types of things that we've had to do in the past. Um, Joel mentioned it takes five years on federal projects, the federal projects that I've been involved in, um, we plan ahead for what the demographic is hoping to be ten years down the road, right? So, that was what my understanding was, was for the feasibility study to determine that, what that growth potential would be. Not a location, not, hey, this is the place that you should put it based on the hubs. We looked at those in coordination with the select board for the best location of what those tie-ins could be to that area. Parking, uh, proximity to the, to the rail trail, uh, those different things to make that, that hub to, to be able to go off. The only thing I would argue that we don't have is great access to the river for portage for people, uh, using the canoe trail. And even that, they can, they can sit at the bridge, they can walk up the rec path, and then they can come use those facilities if they'd like. So it's still within an easy distance. Um, so, what I got to say on that, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, we haven't mounted much, uh.
What's that?
I mean, we had a discussion on that, uh, but we're gonna wait, we're gonna get the public hearing as soon as we get those numbers out.
Let's just talk about that feasibility study, I think we're putting too much emphasis on something that that study's not gonna produce. And they get down, they're gonna give us a utilization of our offerings. They're gonna look at demographics, they're gonna look at income, uh, analysis. So, they're gonna tell us if we do such and such, this is what we can expect. So, they're, they're not gonna tell us where to put the building, if the study comes back, and I think it's gonna be favorable, it'll work anywhere. Whether we put the building, hell, in the back, open apart, it's all gonna work. So what we just have to decide is where's the building, where's the best place to put the building? And I like some of the discussion that I've had on the streets in the morning when I'm out there. Maybe we should reimagine the ball, the Raleigh ball field. Move, maybe some of those offerings over to the Fourth Street property, who knows? Maybe we oughta buy some adjoining property over by the Raleigh fields. Maybe, maybe we should look at, uh, downsizing the, the new facility utilizing existing assets. These are all things that I think should come about, but we need a master plan.
But Steve, that's what a good master plan.
I, that's what I, that's what I'm hitting, if we need a master plan to encompass all of that, the feasibility study's gonna be very useful, very useful, I guess.
So you suggested the feasibility study, how come you didn't suggest a master plan at that time?
I don't know.
And, can I, can I, can I say something real quick?
I just wanna make it clear again, before you do say it, Joel, is that there are two issues here. Uh, you know, I mean, this master plan, I think, is important, uh, and, but, you know, if we're gonna do something, we gotta go forward. Uh, the other issue is the building, okay?
Just, just real quick, cuz things like moving a ball field over to Fourth Street, that was already looked at.
Yeah.
It's not big enough.
Yeah.
No, not, not the whole ball field, maybe.
I, I understand, no, I understand, but you can't even put one large field there because of the dimensions.
How about for the little kids?
Little kids, that's what we looked at, that's what we presented, we showed it, right there on that table. We laid that all out right there, and all we're waiting for, cuz we had to, had to select board approve it, was the cleanup, so that they could start using it for the kids. And they can get a building there, but, but, but that goes.
We, I could absolutely leave that space.
Well, we did the, uh, kind of specific thing that, uh, we can't change now anyways, uh, so let's, you know, I mean, we wanna go forward, I mean, the. Nicole, don't you think in the master plan is something that we should have, or the future rec?
What's our, what's our?
What's the cost and how long will that take?
I mean, they're, they're variables, there's more information that I think we all need to, need to discuss before moving forward. I, I think there's ways for us to work together as a partnership without spending, you know, five hundred thousand dollars to, to get our feet wet, or however much a master plan's gonna cost, to get our feet wet, to, to make sure that the, the networks and relationships we have are gonna be able to function before, you know, it's just another study that sits on a shelf. I mean, there's a master plan out there for, for Marble Mill, there's a, you know, there's other plans out there that, that we've spent all this money on that we're not utilizing. You know, why, why do we have to go straight there when we can work on, you know, maybe we build some sort of memorandum of understanding about some of the other assets, to see if it's, if it's going to function before we go ahead and, and invest the taxpayers' money into something like that. I mean, there, there's lots of small ways that I think that we can improve all of the things that everybody here has addressed tonight, you know, in a, in a, in a really simple fashion. Um, and then, you know, later on down the road, as, as Swanton continues to grow, we, we evaluate that. We are at capacity now, though, so, so I'm asking you all for help now. I can't continue to serve the community at the standard that I, I've set, and I've set it very high with, without your help in this room. So if we need to discuss new location, discuss it now, propose new locations, it needs, it needs to get out there. The community's confused, visitors are confused, clearly us in this room were even confused. So we really need to get it out there and, and stop dancing around each other, I mean, I'll dance with all of you. And, and, so if the location's the holdup today, then it needs to get discussed today.
I, okay, what I'm gonna propose, because we want, whatever happened in the past is past, all right? So we're gonna go for, no, let me finish, let me finish. If we're gonna go forward, we're gonna do this public hearing, or public input. It's not actually hearing, cuz there'll be no decisions made that night. Uh, when we get the feasibility study. And that might be a, a time to start having this discussion about other potentially things that we could do. I, I'd like to have, really, I don't think it's, it's the right time, right this second. But it will be when we get to feasibility, so.
It seems like that's, that's the holdup on everybody's conversation, that seems like that's, you know, three quarters of the questions that I yield on a, on a daily basis. You know, we talk about recreation or community center, my door opens up at seven thirty in the morning, and I handle everything from, from people leaving balls and kayaks, to people that don't know how to fill out forms, people that need to get to A A, meals on wheels. I mean, we're, we're servicing the community in so many different aspects. And without, without some sort of forward progression, we're not gonna be able to serve the community at the standard that I think that we're capable of doing so.
Well, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna be moving forward, and I know it's not gonna be as fast as what you'd want, or what, you know, we need.
But it's not, it's not what I want, it's what the community wants.
I know, but it just don't happen that way. Well, it's just the system not set up to move, but.
Can, can I propose something real quick?
Yes.
Can I brief the select board and executive session, because it's real estate, the five sites? So when someone asks about moving something, we've got it all the scale. Not tonight, I don't have it with me.
I do.
Well, we're, we're gonna have, we're gonna have something discussed tonight, yes.
But I mean, I, I would like to sit down and, and show you, again, I know you've seen everything in the past is behind us, it, it's a lot of work that was done.
I know, but I, any, any, when, when we get to say, well, they said that, he said that, she said that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm talking the facts.
No, I just, you know, now, now what we gotta, because we really do need the community's support. And everybody's saying you got your polls and stuff, but there are a lot of people that have concerns, okay? And, but it gets time to vote, for the, you know, when the.
I think you bring up some interesting things there, Earl.
What?
I think you bring up some very interesting things there, and I'm just, I'm, I'm curious as to how things work, so. This sidewalk project, for instance, I mean, that was approved and passed to do. Um, some of the smack on social media as well, there's no need for a sidewalk anyway, because no one walks to the.
Okay, let me clarify one.
Just, just hang on, let me, let me finish, sir.
Okay.
Um, i- it's just one example, that we had approval, and we were moving forward, and now we've, we've suddenly stopped, right? So if we go forward with this master plan, what is the longevity of this master plan? Is it the next select board? When, when you guys turn over, right? When the next board is elected, is then, is, is the master plan then no longer good, and then do we start repeating the process? And, and that is one of the things, if you don't have a constant, you don't have that ability to, to maintain that momentum. So I'm, I'm just curious, if this master plan is approved, then what is the longevity of that?
Master plans always change, people change, that's, you know, there's no. Master plans always change, people change, that's, you know, there's no, I can't say that. But when it comes to the MVU sidewalk, you need to real estate now. That, uh, there were some changes that took place that was originally proposed. One of the first things you need to understand is that was never voter approved. Never. It was put in as a line item in the general budget.
What are you saying, the six hundred thousand?
And I'm pretty sure I voted on it.
Yes, you voted on the budget, but I'm, I'm sure that the vast majority of people did.
So what do we do that, what do we do to that money that we voted to allocate for?
That's gonna go back to the taxpayers. And there's no intention from MVU to connect to the sidewalks. So there's a lot of issues. Right now, we're keeping all the information we have on that. And if a need comes in the future, we've got a starting point. But we have, one of our main concerns was this idea that this community in rec center is a priority. And it was gonna take more money than originally allotted for the MVU sidewalk. So how many things can we do? Our decision is this is a priority.
Does anybody know how long it takes to develop a master plan? Is there like a, like three months, six months? Does anybody know the answer to that? That's a legit question.
I, I can't answer that question, but I think, well, I mean, maybe we should form a committee? To look into this, go ahead, Steve.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just, I, I think the other question is, is the village interested in sharing some of the cost if we vote to look at a master plan? Because it's gonna affect both, it's gonna affect the donor in the whole here. Are they interested in coming up with some money to help us fund this?
I'm a village resident, I'm for it.
Two.
On one vote.
So, I mean, that's just a, a question. Are you?
I'd have to think on it.
Okay.
And what kind of master plan are you talking about? Recreation?
Parks.
Master plan?
Park.
Parks and parks and recreation.
Parks and recreation.
Yes.
I think we could listen to some proposals anyways. Work together, I mean. Website work together, or whether anybody wants to admit it or not, we're on a roll here.
Is this a separate master plan from the?
The vote?
The community center master plan, are you talking about now? Or just encompassing all parks and recreations and community centers as a whole in one master plan?
It should encompass all parks and recreation. We want to take a look at the big picture, make sure that we're doing everything the way it should be done. And maybe in three years, the MVU select board members, if we do a good job now, they are gonna change the plan.
What's the difference between a master plan and that new plan that the planning commission is coming out with, with the new town plan? That was two hundred something pages, and that was only like a whole lot less pages.
Eighty-three, yeah, actually.
What is it?
Yeah.
I know that when those plans themselves have recreation in them, improvement of recreation, that's what opens us up to grant funding. To have more projects and do more things like this. And we need to rely on taxpayers less because we have the grant funding that's available for things like this. Either way, how do we move forward with the, the next part? Um, are we talking about location first amongst yourselves? You know, are we gonna have, like, you guys have an executive session together to talk about real estate? You know, where is a proposed facility gonna go? Um, is everything just gonna wait until the feasibility is done? Or there's things that we can do in the meantime that make us all better prepared for when we have a public meeting after the feasibility study is done? It's already paid for, it's already in the works, why waste it? And it's feasible, right? What's the point of it? Uh, but if a master plan is gonna be needed, I'd ask that you start today then. If this is gonna be required to make a community center happen, make a motion to get a master plan now or sooner, or put it to the people.
Now, I, I don't see where we have to have the master plan done before something gets done with, with the community and rec sector. Uh, you know, because it may not, it may not get done, but if it does get done in that timeframe, we, you know, we're looking at public input not until the end of September, and I would like to see some kind of committee just to carry that part forward, the master plan part forward. And then after the, the public hearing at the end of September, then we can go forward with the, with the, with the building, 'cause then there'll be more discussions about everything. You'll have more information.
According to Google, it takes eighteen to twenty months to do a master plan.
That'll be, we'll need to have spent the six hundred thousand RFP by twenty twenty-six, correct? Is that accurate?
Correct, it, it needs to be allocated by twenty twenty-four and, and spent by twenty twenty-six.
So there's not enough time for a master plan then? It'll take, did you say sixteen, eighteen months?
Well, I, I would, I would vet that a little bit, and so she, she.
To, to hang up the center on the master plan.
Nicole has Googled something, right? I mean, she could be Googling a master plan for a commi- a community, a, a community of two hundred thousand people or something.
Yeah.
I would put an RFP out if you were gonna do it, and.
What does RFP stand for?
Request for a proposal and find out how long it takes, and someone will come back and tell you how long it'll take. You know, I don't think they can tell you in this room how long it'll take to do a master plan.
No, I don't think so either.
But the only thing I would say, Earl, if you are going to do a master plan and you are going to, uh, do this for the rec, I would include, make sure they include land that you do not own at the time, because that has to be included. There's some sort of acquisition that someone could make, it's gonna be included in that master plan, or you're doing it for nothing. You know, you have, you have to include that if it's going to affect the location of the, the center. You know, our, our kid, our kids have been in, in the, they've grown up in the, in the rec. Certainly, the, the, the rec is more than deserving of this building. And, and they've certainly worked very hard, and I've sat through a lot of meetings with different, uh, select boards. And their, uh, our, our kids play AU basketball. We've seen these great community centers all around that have, have worked out great for communities. And I, I think that, uh, what, uh, the rec does for kids here, from Little League baseball, the youth basketball, to, uh, their, uh, camps and, uh, working with Notch and what Nicole does. Our children have been to a lot of camps, and the ones they always come back to is right here in Swan. And, and they have to do it out of basically a garage when it's raining. So I don't think there's, uh, any community more deserving than what they're putting forward. So, uh, I hope that the select board, uh, really, uh, takes a hard look on making this happen and going through the right, uh, steps to get there. I know you need to go through the right steps to, to get there, and I think you're, uh, you're on the, the right, right path. But I don't think there's any, uh, community that's better served for, uh, moving forward in this.
Sooner better than later.
Yeah, yeah, it's always, always longer than it thinks.
Well, is any interest in, uh, I mean, if we wanna carry at least the master plan forward, uh, a committee to find out what's, what's the specifics, uh, you know, who you could contract, or, I mean, do we need to contract? I mean, I don't know. Yes, Neil.
Uh, Earl, if, if you wanna go ahead with a, a master plan that includes parks and recreation, et cetera, et cetera, I think the village would be happy to be involved in that, because we're involved in it, anyway, taking care of the parks. So, uh, but I, like Gordon says, I don't think that should hold this project up here.
No, I don't think.
The community's the right center, sorry. Uh, but, uh, we, we should get some professional input on how to go about it, because like Joel says, this has been, this community center has been a hodgepodge. You've got so many different things trying to come together, and you don't have a direction to go into. So tonight, if, if you're gonna wait for the, wait for the, uh,
Feasibility.
Proposal, uh, then bring it to the, I mean, uh.
Feasibility.
Feasibility study.
Yeah.
Uh, like Joel says, you gotta wait for that before you go to the public. But you, you, you gotta follow up on this. If you're gonna start it, you're gonna stick with it. And the village would be happy to, uh, post a facility up there. You, you can, uh, or whatever we else we have to do.
Okay, I'm gonna throw this out.
'Cause another thing, if you're gonna, if you're gonna prep yourself to wait for grant money, you might as well write it off, 'cause it doesn't come, like Gordon says, it doesn't come as fast as it, if it comes at all, it doesn't come as fast as you want it to be. So this is gonna be a strong endeavor.
Well, it's always like that. Uh, I'm gonna throw this out. Uh, I'm thinking that Brian, Bill, and Nicole would be a good committee to come up with the specifics of what it's gonna take to get a master plan done. Now, I don't know how the village.
I love, I love working with these gentlemen.
The right people will put the master plan.
Well, that's what they would be in charge of doing. And I think they're more than capable, but it, I mean, that would be up to the trustees to decide whether they wanna do that. Uh, and up to the select board too, and then up to Nicole and the rec committee.
I think Gordon should be on the committee.
I agree.
He's one, he's, he's the one that started it.
What's the difference between the rec committee and the recreation commission? Is it just, that's just the rec department and the line item on the tax, and?
Well, it, it could be, uh, future development for the rec committee. Uh, I mean, a master plan looks into the future, so you know if you're gonna build, you wanna build big enough for the future. And the experts can tell you about that, that you can get two hundred fifty people on Facebook and not believe any of them. But you gotta have, you gotta hire somebody that knows what they're talking about, and then discuss it with them.
I got that about the master plan, I was just saying, the committee itself, you're forming a new committee, is that what you guys are talking about doing?
Just specifically to get more information back to everybody.
I'd like to join that one.
On the master plan.
On the master plan.
Yes.
So we can decide whether we wanna go forward with it, okay? Uh, and that's why I suggested a select, uh, somebody from the town, somebody from the village, and somebody from the rec department.
Sounds like a good idea.
So, so the committee, would there be a recreation board member on that committee as well?
I'm not a board member, I'm the director.
Yeah. Well, you are a board member.
Well, I'm a select board member, but I'm not a rec board director.
Well, here's what I'm thinking, I would like to have, because this is what their jobs are, and they're actually very good at it. If they would go out and get the information of, you know, consultants, costs, whatever, or, you know, find out more. We, we don't know what it involves, for sure. At that point in time, then the boards, both boards could get together and say, okay, if we wanna do this, yes, then we would probably do what you're saying. I'm thinking we would, 'cause I, I got enough things to do. Is form a committee to go forward with the master plan, and it would then be people from the rec commission on there. Because it's a rec commission, uh, it's recreation. There'd be somebody from the village because of the parks. Yeah, part of it, so there'd be some, there'd have to be village represent, represent, representation. And then there'd have to be someone from the town representing. But the rec commission would definitely be involved, they'd be equal partners, or probably higher. But right now, we need to know what, what it all involves. And that's why I would put these three people on, on the job.
So would the village authorize Mr. Shish to be part of that committee? Do you guys think that would work?
Put me in, Coach.
Put me in, Coach.
No, I'm sitting on the corner.
Yeah, I don't get to speak unless they say.
This is center field.
So, Earl, just, I wanna see if I'm clear on it.
Okay.
What the, the committee is gonna do is find some experts that are willing to give us a re- Uh, we're gonna find some people to send a request for proposals to. They will bring those back to the board.
Yes, and plus find out what it involves doing this, you know, besides who's available to do it.
Would you like my votes now?
No, I don't really like that.
Give them to you, Brian.
So, I, I don't know, I mean, do we, I don't know if we have to make a motion or not, probably not. I don't know about the village. I mean, it's probably, I don't know, you're gonna take it, you know, but I'd like to see something back by the end of August. Is that possible?
There's a whole bag under there you can start digging through, I'm prepared and ready to roll.
Okay, alright.
I would, I would say that we should make a motion at least then, it's a matter of, uh, a record that we can go back and, and look at and hold ourselves accountable to.
Fine with me, uh, we make a motion, uh, something along the lines that we're gonna appoint, uh, Nicole, Brian, and Bill, uh, to report back to the trustees and the select board, uh, on what it involves to get a master plan for parks and recreation. And we're hoping that it can be done by the third meeting and second meeting in August. I don't know what the date is on that.
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Push you too hard?
I'm, I told you, I'm, I'm ready to go, I've got, I've cut all kinds of stuff ready to, that I bore you all with tonight if you wanted me to.
Mr. President, may I speak? So it sounds like the, the scope of work that you're suggesting is not a heavy lift.
No.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Two weeks, we come back here.
Oh, you wanna come back, uh, they didn't wanna push you too hard.
Yeah, two weeks.
Yeah, alright, then we'll.
We're, all we are doing is going out and finding resources and suggesting net steps.
Yes.
The other thing that I think you're missing is, you've got a programmatic feasibility study, excellent. You need a location feasibility study. And that should be presented when you do the open session in September. In other words, if I'm a member of the public, I would say, oh, what sites have you looked at? And why didn't you choose them? I'm an idiot, so I'm gonna volunteer to help. It's what I did in the state police for twelve different barracks. It's just a lot of work, but, uh, I'll help Brian and we'll do it for free.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
One second.
Alright, motion's been made in second, and everybody heard it, uh, and it's in the air's record, it'll be on the website tomorrow. All who favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
I think a lot of that is gonna be super easy for him, 'cause I think Joel said that they already did all that already. You meant track?
Thanks for someone listening, thank you. Because again, I volunteered to show you guys an executive session, and you didn't take me up on it.
Well, we ain't done yet.
Uh, that's what you just did, you just voted two others to go ahead and do something.
No, no, this is for the master.
That's what Bill just, just offered.
This is for the master plan. Okay, it's a separate issue from the rec and community center. This is for a park and recreation master plan.
And then Bill got up, and then you said, let's vote on it, so it's both, but maybe not, I don't know. You're good.
You're good. It's for parks and recreation, a master plan.
Okay.
And there's been discussions, there's things that have come before the board, that maybe it's time with all the facilities that Swan has, that, you know, the village does, does all the work. Uh, there's so much to do that.
I'm fully supporting that.
Okay, alright, that's what this plan is gonna be improved at, along with recreation, but it's two separate issues.
I don't, I didn't understand that.
Alright.
He was just, basically, Bill was, was talking about the location and, and, you know, to everybody know where it was gonna be, but he had already, uh, already.
Oh, okay, I understand, alright, alright.
Maybe them three can work together.
No.
Well. People will ask the questions, no problem. Okay.
Where did we left on the first part of it? We're just gonna wait for the feasibility study and then start planning public forums for like, say it comes at the end of September, we planning for, you know, Oc- the end of October? you know, o- the end of October? That way we have time to spread the information, knock on doors?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something our board can discuss, yeah.
Once we get the study to, we know the timeline, we can plan out a little further.
Yeah, we can, uh, we'll get the village complex and, uh, schedule it, as soon as we get the feasibility, uh, as soon as we get the study. And we won't do it on a select board meeting, we'll have a special meeting separate, so that way we can devote it solely to that issue.
Just wondering, that the three of you consult with Joel since he's been, he's got information that other people will see to him.
I'd like to think that I have a pretty good line of communication with Mr. Clark, and I'm happy to continue that, as long as he's willing.
I would really like to see Joel brief us on one of the locations.
I would like to add myself to your mix, just when you can let me in there. Let's not executive session, like stuff or whatever, so I can keep up on what's going on, and then put things back in layman's terms for the public.
Okay, yeah, yeah, alright, that's no problem. Okay, so is there any more on this parks, master plan, recreation, community center?
Not right now.
Okay.
Oh, wait, also, um, if you build it, they will come, Ray can sell it.
Interesting.
Mr. Chair, may I take my seat again?
Yes, you can, Nicole.
Are you talking about ATVs?
Oh, ATV, oh. That's right, we got one more issue. Forgot. Discussion of ATV ordinance with village trustees only, is that off, is it cause you want it off the record?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, I'm gonna make it quick.
Okay.
Um, at our last trustee meeting, Adam Paxton, sorry. At our last trustee meeting, when, uh, Chief Sullivan was there, I brought up the fact that we're seeing many, many more ATVs running through the village now. And it seems to me that it all started with the ATV ordinance. Um, I'm, where I live, a lot of ATVs come in from Highgate Springs. Can't control that, unfortunately, unless you build a wall, but you're not gonna do that. So, we need to come up with a solution, or have discussion with the ATV owners about running through the village, because the town ordinance is specific to certain roads, it is not specific to the village.
No, the village is not in the ordinance.
The village is not in the ordinance, and we need to get it out there that the village is not in the ordinance. Um, my concern is that we're seeing mini bikes and ATVs and people riding around with no helmets.
Yeah.
Um, it's ludicrous.
Oh, we see them come right down this road, scoot around the park, go get their lunch, and go back, or get another drink, so that's.
Yeah.
I don't think that ATV ordinance brought that to them.
Driving lawnmowers too.
I know, yeah.
Cause I, I.
We'll get to that one.
I, I was really glad to be a part of that conversation at your last meeting. From what I see, because I do see a, a lot of usage in, in the village, it, it's the same people that are habitual offenders, that just have no regard or care for apparently the rules, or, or people, or, or whatever it is. Um, I, I think that it may be important for us to consider putting up signage at, at maybe those village limits to let folks know that you are no longer in the town, there is no ATV usage past this point. Um, because I think, you know, signage can help. Um, but I, you know, I, I do, I, I do recognize what, what you're saying, as I have witnessed it myself.
Yeah, and then, again, that's one of the suggestions I was gonna come forward with, which I appreciate you, you giving out, cause it's, you know, great minds. Um, but it's, you know, we need to, we need to do something, signage, uh, more communication. Um, you know, the more, the more pictures, I mean, if, if you see one, get a picture of the person if you can, you know? Um, Chief Sullivan said, the more pictures, he's more happy to go through. He says odds are, it's probably the same half a dozen people that are doing it. Um, but we don't know that. Uh, you know, again, the challenge is coming in from Highgate Springs, and, you know, I only know of one way to deal with that. So, but, uh, I just, I wanted to get that out there, um, and, you know, thank you for the, you know, suggestion of the signs as well, so.
If I may, I, I personally witnessed the village police, they're, they're not, they're not doing anything to force it.
They can't chase.
No. I mean, I witnessed just, just about two weeks ago, right on Grand Avenue. Kid was doing donuts right around the round, the officer sat right there. Never, never went towards him to speak to him or anything.
And I will, I. I'll bring it up with Chief Sullivan, but.
And I agree with you.
My understanding is that.
It's a huge problem.
They can't, they can't chase, you know, there's no chasing allowed.
No, I understand that.
Which, you know, honestly, if you're not, if you're doing that, and it's wrong, then you should be punished.
Yeah.
Regardless.
And you're, you're right, it's definitely getting out of hand, because hardly do you go through the village now, you don't see somebody go.
Yep, you know, and maybe on the website, if I could add, um, simply, you know, here are the roads that the ATVs can go on. Then other than that, they're the top limits.
Alright, should be one of the highlights of our meeting, and to put it out.
I will, uh, say that those coming into Highgate Springs, even in the ordinance, they have no business on a state highway.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, it's pretty true to state road.
Basically, anybody who lives in West Swan cannot come into the village legally, I'm very, they can ride around all they want around the island, but they can't come into the village.
Right.
Um, so, uh, and I see these people too, I, I, I don't even think that, that some of them are old enough
Yeah.
even have travel license, or not wearing helmets. They probably don't have insurance, all. Well, certainly, if they were part of the group that came to see us without having an ordinance to allow usage, they'd probably get thrown out.
And, and I will say that there has been responsible ATV riders that call their office and say, how do I get from here to there? I said, we can't go on any village roads, this is a state road trailer.
And, and there are people like that.
And as we've had a lot of calls, but responsible people are gonna follow the ordinance, and the ones who've been breaking it right along, and continue to break it, unfortunately. Cause they know they're not gonna be chased.
That's generally the way it is with everything, uh, but we can look into, Brian.
And the signs are a dear.
She wasn't available for signage for, you know, ATV, there's probably some state has some signs or something, I, I don't think that's such a bad idea.
Or Kevin from.
Yeah, or Kevin, yeah.
Kevin ordered some signage for.
Yes, quick.
Okay, um, so, I don't know if there'd be interest in this, but I have a suggestion for, for visual help, because I'm confused about the lines too, where's the town, where are getting, but all the members that came in that asked for the ATV, like in Vasa, there's a lot of, you know, diehard, like loves, you know, ATVs and all that, maybe they could, uh, we could find somebody, I, I could find somebody who's willing to put on a GoPro from Northwest Access. You know, drive the actual trails, and be like, you can go here, you can't go here, you can go here, and then we have an actual visual to the roads that you can drive on, and the ones you can't, just that in itself can put the information out to the people.
I don't think you can get into the village legally.
And, you know.
I don't think you can get into it legally, or anything that comes in the South State.
Just a quick thing, I think we ought to give some kind of thought to the, um, ATV folks that are using our town highways. They go by I House a lot, and they're very responsive. They, uh, they keep the speed limit, and these are some, what do you call them, razors, I'm not too familiar with that. It's a husband and wife out for a little evening ride, you know, they soak. We have some folks that are really, uh, doing what they should be doing.
Yeah.
So, and it's the same thing.
It's just like. Only takes one bad apple to grow a.
Yeah, it's the mayor apple, it's ruining everything.
Yeah, so I think the ordinance does.
Yeah, we'll keep, do the signage issue, and, uh, you know, at least I can be there for people.
People who are gonna follow the rules, they're gonna follow rules, and they still are, they're doing a great job. But the, the young kids, they drive somebody up the road first, so I live right on First Street, and that was one of those main drag strips for formulas. Um, and they'll send somebody up the road first to look ahead and make sure there's no cops. And I also feel like now that ATVs are allowed in Swan, which I think is a great thing on the town roads, you know, more talk has been had, so it's gotten out there more that they know they're not going to be chased. So you have those rebels, they're like, well, forget about it, I'm just gonna do it anyway, they're, they can't chase me. Um, but pictures, if you got people without helmets, absolutely take their pictures. If the police could ask people who have rings, or, uh, the ring camera system, or like the main strip. CODIS has cameras now outside. That's all.
Just one thought, though, uh, if it was possible for ATVs to go through the village on an approved route. Nothing that, nothing that would ever work. I'm talking about responsible people would use that, but I mean, if there's nothing that you don't think it ever would work, that's fine.
It does bring a lot of money into the community.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
Lot of money in it.
Yep. Lot of. I'm sure, we, we've gotta weed out the bad apples, so we can let the.
I don't know of any community, I don't think that's ever gonna be possible, to be able to do that. Like the other day, I just saw two kids on the bridge, the sidewalk, on a four wheeler. And you're never gonna, unless they get reprimanded or something happens, then unfortunately, you're never gonna fix that, cause that's just the way youth operate.
That's bigger than local government.
Right, and unfortunately, it's the majority of people who wanna be able to, to do stuff like that too, and, you know, like a older couple wants to go get a creamy in their side by side, they can't do that now, cause, you know, cause it's just a.
Alright, thank you.
I'm going home to dinner.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, we going on to any other necessary business?
Bonjour.
I mean, the spoke down.
You thought you said about the block.
Uh, the highway department, Swan Hill there.
Cheers, Andy.
Are we free to go too, or?
You're not, you're not being detained.
I thought we were trying to get to the session.
No, stay, stay. Stay.
Well, Adam just left.
Do you want us to stay?
Is it, do you want me to go get him?
I'll get him.
Okay, now, public comment? Yes, yes, the part we're gonna talk with them.
We don't need Adam.
That's right, well, I guess we don't need him, though.
Can you make him come all the way back?
What are we discussing, in the technical?
Are you talking Berry Road? I'm going back to that.
Berry Road. Oh, Swan Hill Berry Road, yeah.
Okay, I'll try to keep this very simple.
No, you're all set, Adam.
In your.
You're all set. Miscommunication.
Oh, so we can all be?
No, the rec, you can stay as part of the rec department.
Oh, are you guys discussing the property, then, then shouldn't the village stay too, if you're talking about the property and the location?
Maybe, uh, Neil and Bill could stay, everybody doesn't have to stay, just so you know what's going on.
When's this executive session?
As soon as Brian gets done with Berry Road. All good?
Yes, you're good, thank you. I'm gonna go outside and warm up.
Alright, alright.
Okay, on the back, the very last page here, this is a Google Maps. It's a picture, it has.
I'm goodie, goodie. Thank you for coming.
It just changes what it's called.
Just changes what it's called, I get into the point that we gotta fix nine one one. Oh, okay. Now, this French Hill Road, excuse me, French Hill Road used to, they've always said it would, this was called French Hill Road because it turned the corner. And went like that to the Berry Road, um, so, that's actually Swan Hill Road. It says so, like this house, uh, the only reason why it's slightly turned that way is the fact that it's, um, most of the traffic is going to Fairfield, or coming from Fairfield.
Yeah.
So, that would all become Swan Hill Road, all the way to the Fairfield, Swan Hill town hall. So, it just, uh.
So you wanna change the name of that Berry Road, it won't be no more Berry Road.
Basically, that, that's what it is, yeah, so, it, uh, uh, and I talked with Kevin about this, and Kathy and Tonya, we all came up to that conclusion. Um, and then there is one house that, uh, presently is a French Hill Road, but we gotta change her address to Swan Hill Road, and, um, she may, may hear from her, um, because, um, but her deed says Swan Hill Road. So, it, over the years, somehow, this got really messed up up there. So, um, so that's, we just, um, delete the Berry Hill Road, have it all go to Swan, uh, Swan Hill Road.
Do you need a motion? Do you need a motion on that, Earl?
Do, do we?
Yeah, this.
Okay.
To correct.
I'll move.
I'll second.
You gotta read it in a minute, you.
Did you guys came back this time?
Berry Hill Road will be changed to Swan Hill Road.
Right. And Berry Hill Road.
They made by Ed.
Second to my code. Joe, you got that?
Cody seconded it.
Yes.
Ed made it, alright, all who's, uh, in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's that. Now, um, I think.
Public comment.
Public comment, and then your upcoming events.
Yeah.
Then I gotta, I'll be right.
Don't have any more public comment, I guess we, we had a fair amount tonight.
We can have more.
Don't get me started, Neil, I'm ready.
Okay, then, the upcoming events, uh, planning commission, Wednesday, July twelfth, six thirty P M, here at the town offices. Uh, the L V R T celebration, Saturday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And that's gonna be at seven A M, Robin Hood Drive. Uh, select board's next meeting will be Tuesday, July eighteenth, at six P M, here at the town offices. The D R B, Development Review Board, Thursday, July twenty-seventh, six P M, at the town offices. And if you need any more information, go to the website.
Earl, just. One of the things I enjoy reading of, of the minutes for the planning commission, I think they are doing an outstanding job. I, they're busy, 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 and as you read through there, they're looking for ways to say yes, pretty obvious. Uh, and I think before we had had a discussion about some issues, uh, I, I'm pretty impressed with the, with the velocity that they're seeing folks with, and the outcome of the decisions, which are immediate, so. I think we ought to give a shout out to them.
Yeah.
Good job.
I agree, I agree, they've done a lot of work.
July sixteenth is the next food truck and open market Sunday. Um, today was supposed to be our next SEP meeting, but I suggested that we push it back, um, so that we could be here about our community center today. Um, so, we're gonna be proposing new dates for that, I know earlier, there was at least five steering committee members of SEP sitting in the room, so, but we'll spread that information out, get some more proposed dates, try to build more community attendance with that, with more, all means are now open to the public, with more transparency, more communications, we build our communities, if you build it, they will come, alright, that's all I have to do, I guess. And then July twenty-ninth is the Swan Chamber of Commerce car show. Oh, car show. And if they allow it, we're gonna announce the winners from yard of the year, the beautification committee is working on.
What's a cartel?
Car show.
Oh, cartel.
Cartil. July twenty-nine. Raffle tickets, fifty fifty.
Alright, I guess that's it for the public meeting, and you're.
Oh boy, I move that we find that we enter executive session for the select board to receive confidential information, for which the premature disclosure of it to the general public would clearly place the select board and others at a substantial disadvantage.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.